Call the Buckingham Planning Commission meeting for November 28th, the order. Please stand as, excuse me. Apologize. Still throat. See, I'm sorry. Mr. Dory is going to lead us in the invocation and Mr. Taylor is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Thank you, dear heavenly Father, for letting us be here tonight. We pray that we'll do the right things for our county. We ask for your guidance and direction and have us do the right things that you would have us do and give us safe passage on the way back home until we meet again. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand. On a God invisible with everything and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings us to Sabbath with a quorum. We have full slate, eight of eight, so we do have a quorum. Ms. Nicky, is there any changes? I'll get it right in a minute. Nicky, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman, no changes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Brings us to approval of our minutes for October 24th, 2022. Any changes to the minutes? Saying none to have a motion to approve is presented.
Still moved.
Have motion and second to approve in a discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes. That brings us to the public comment period. Nicky, do we have anybody signed up?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have two, Teresa McManus, followed by Cindy Marchetti.
Okay. Please come forward and state your full name, address. Have, you have three minutes, of course.
Teresa McManus, District Two, Scotts Bottom Road. I hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving. I had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I had the ex-district, the deputy district attorney for the state of Virginia who came to visit. Wonderful weekend. You made a wonderful prayer that you were going to do something and hope that God guides you. I hope you believe that. I hope you mean it. I hope you understand that what you people do affects our lives. Everybody's watching. I know I make a lot of noise up here sometimes, but I'm going to tell you now, you've ruined my life, you've ruined my farm, you have no backbone. You're yes-men. I'm going to buy property next to everybody's house and I'm going to have it rezoned and I'm going to rezone it for industrial. And then I'm going to put a cesspool in there because that's what you're doing. You don't give a crap about any of us. I'm going to take that back. There are two of you that I think actually stand up for us. Mr. Allen, thank you very much. Mr. Kapaczynski, thank you very much. I've been told by somebody on the Board of Supervisors that Mr. Kapaczynski makes it uncomfortable for you guys and for him. Mr. Miles has told me that. Why is that? Because he cares? Because he's been out there looking? Because he does his job. You're all the Snickers? How many else of you do your job? How many of you are out there looking? How many actually know what the people of this county want? You're going to put in my backyard a 50-acre solar panel farm. Thanks.
Please, next.
Cindy Marchetti.
Good evening. Cindy Marchetti, I'm in Marshall District, so Mr. Bigford, you represent me. And I just wanted to express concern over the zoning that Olympia Moore, who inherited the property in the village industrial area, is trying to zone B1. And I think it's unfair to do that without the people even being aware of what's going on. I just talked to a resident who lives on Old South Lane and she said she had no idea that she has seen that that property has been up for sale multiple times before, but it was overpriced and so it never sold. But she said, you know, it's already hard enough getting her child, who is handicapped, out every morning to, with the gas station there, that it's already hard to maneuver in that area. So she was upset that she had no idea that this was even being talked about to zone it. So it's not fair that if, it's my understanding, if you rezone it to business, then there isn't, then it's business. And so then anybody can, can buy it and move forward with the business. So I think we just better put the brakes on and think about what's best for your, for your community and the health and welfare and safety of everyone.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from Nicky? Okay. Saying that, I'll close the public comment. We'll move to old business, which is the public hearing for the Rosny Creek Solar Farm.
Yes, sir. This evening, the public hearing for case 22 SUP 319. Landowner is Ivan P. Davis at 106 Wetstone Lane, deal one, and the applicant is Rosny Creek Solar LLC, 120 Garrett Street, Suite 700, Charlottesville, Virginia. Property information, tax map 151 parcel 21, contains approximately 439 acres and it's located at 19691 East James Anderson Highway in the Curritsville Magisterial District and it's currently zoned agricultural A1. The request from the applicant is to obtain a special use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a five-megawatt utility-scale solar facility on approximately 439 acres in Buckingham County. I will point out that the applicant did send in an amended condition in a response to how and where the five-megawatt solar generating facility will be located. And it does state that modifications to the general plan permitted at the time of building permit based on state and federal approvals, design requirements that comply with these conditions, the solar equipment and accompanying stormwater features shall be limited to no more than 55 acres of the 439.6-acre property as depicted in the general plan. As we went over in the introduction with this case in September, the zoning ordinance does not permit a public utility generating plant as a permitted use. However, within the A1 zoning district, substations, meters, and other facilities, including railroads and water and sewage facilities, may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the Planning Commission in accordance with this ordinance and the Code of Virginia. The Planning Commission may recommend and the Board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if this special use permit is approved. Rosny Creek Solar LLC does request the special use permit for the five-acre, five-megawatt utility-scale solar facility. The applicant is with us this evening, Mary Margaret Hertz, to answer best questions and concerns.
Okay.
Prior to the public hearing and after.
Ms. Hertz, would you come to the podium, please?
Evening. Hey, everybody.
Thank you. I did have one question. In your community meeting, you had told me, I believe, if I recall, 40% of the acres would be in panels. So that would be roughly 20 acres, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Additional five acres is not going to affect that one way or the other, correct?
I do not believe so.
All right. If it did, it would still be same thing roughly, then it's another acre then.
Correct. So we refer to it as a ground coverage ratio, so about 40% of any fenced area will be covered in panels, for your question.
All right. All right, thank you. That's the only question I had. Does any other Commissioners have anything before we do the public here?
Just some comments?
Yes.
I've been, actually, I sent a, I sent a memo out to, I gave it to the zoning people and I suggested that we put some conditions together. And I think most of them have been answered, but for the record, I'd like to make sure. So as an example, we talked about a surety to cover any eventual environmental mishaps and I understand that, that there is a surety that's been purchased. Is that right, Ms. Edmondson?
So the surety, we talked a little bit, Mr. Kapaczynski, about the surety that covers environmental issues from beginning of construction to decommission. So there are two different things that would be at play. There would be a surety bond placed for the erosion and sediment control bond at the beginning and during construction up till, up until completion of the project. And then, of course, the decommissioning plan and the bond associated with that would have to be presented and approved by legal counsel for the county before even a building permit could be obtained. So there would be two.
So there is surety. My second, my second question had something to do with electrical and battery storage or panels were stored regardless of the reason. And I understand that under condition five, that is not in the SUP. So there will be no storage of batteries or any other electrical equipment. Is that true?
Correct. We are only asking for a special use permit for solar energy facilities, no battery storage is included. That would require a separate permit if we wanted to come back and do that.
All right. And then another condition that I looked for was that anything that was damaged or spent with regard to your electrical components would be removed immediately and sent on to an appropriate place for disposal. My understanding is that there is a solid waste ordinance, and I will talk to Mr. Hill, a solid waste ordinance in, in Buckingham County that would not allow you to use any part of our property for, for dumping purposes, including the storage of spent or damaged electrical equipment or batteries. Is that, is that understood by you as well?
That is understood by me. I don't think we have anything specifically addressing that in our condition.
There's nothing specifically addressing this. Mr. Kapaczynski, please correct me if I don't have thoughts, you know, properly formulated in, in this response to Mary Margaret. Mr. Kapaczynski's concerns are about damaged parts that are going to be, need to be replaced and where the disposal of this would take place. As he's pointed out and we discussed in the last few days, the solid waste ordinance addresses commercial usage and the inability to do so within the receptacles, the trash receptacles here within the county, which means that solid waste ordinance prevents a company such as Apex or any commercial company to dispose of their solar panels in our dumpsters. At this time, we do not have an active landfill, whether it's in the county, for any form of disposal. Is that, does that?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that's understood and on the record, you know, between us and you. Okay? And, and you would agree to that, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Right. And then obviously, the last one had to do with surety to cover full reparations of the land. Now, this is interesting because I understand that the contract is essentially between you and Mr. Davis and we understand that. Obviously, we'd like to see at the end of 30 years, I won't be here, but I might be looking down, maybe, up, who knows? But the point I'm getting at is that it should be, it should be returned to its agrarian status. So I'm wondering whether or not there should be some kind of a presentation by you and Mr. Chip Davis to the county to give us assurance that your contract would be supportive of that particular condition. Is that something that would be, I'll ask Ms. Edmondson, is that something that we can ask for?
It probably would need to be fully reviewed by our legal counsel, Mr. Wright, but if in these conditions, you feel that, that contract would strengthen the conditions and maintain the integrity of the district long after the panels are removed and decommissioned, it may be inappropriate to add.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking the Commissioners.
Normally, the contracts are not in the purview of the Planning Commission, but I do understand where you're going with this. If you were to impose a condition that way, how would you frame it, Pete?
Mike, let me start off by telling you what my concern is. Obviously, they're these small five-megawatt plants that are, that are being constructed. There's a few of them going around the county. If these, if these contractors, if these contracts are kept out of the purview of the Commission and, and the county in general, then we really don't, again, there's a veil between the LLC and Apex and Apex and Aris. There's a veil between there. So there's not a big balance sheet on the LLC. So given the fact that we don't know, we have no assurances what's going to happen to this LLC, the county has no control, other than a lawsuit possibly, on, on taking care of an eventual problem should the LLC go defunct. All right? So my concern is that somehow we ought to be given an assurance that there's some permanence in the contract between you and the owner of the land that satisfies the county in the event that the LLC does go, go away or is sold, that that land will be returned to its agrarian, its original use status. And that, so the way I would frame it is some guarantee to the county that the contract is satisfactorily executed between the, the, the electric, the solar company and the owner of the land to the satisfaction of the county that the land can be returned at some point in time to its agrarian, its original status.
If I'm, if I may?
Yes.
So we do have a condition in our proposed conditions that addresses decommissioning specifically and guarantees that we will post some kind of financial surety and provide a decommissioning plan prior to construction. So not only does this plan outline specific steps for how we assessed the amount of the bond that would be posted and in the county's name, so that's not within the landowner's control. That's something that the county has access to funds should, you know, the worst happen and the LLC go, fall under, as you, as you are saying. So the county would be provided not only with the funds to make those reparations, to return the land to its original state or as near as possible, but you'd also have access to this plan that outlines an engineer's assessment of the steps to achieve that. It begins, you know, it starts with materials recycling and goes all the way through removal, depth of removal, how to regrade, restore grade, reseed, and that sort of thing.
Environmental remediation included in that? Is that?
Not confident, but I do believe that is a component. I can follow up on that.
Well, it should be.
Yeah, it absolutely should be. I, I agree. And we will be consulting with the Department of Environmental Quality, you know, prior to construction, if we make it that far, and, you know, Department of Transportation and Erosion and Soil Control as well, so.
Last, I went through your, I went through the conditions to the extent I could and I noticed that there's an assigns clause, which is fine, but I want to make sure that essentially, because the LLC does not have a bloated balance sheet by any means, that whatever happens to the LLC, that something can be brought back to the parent, whoever owns this LLC, who has financial responsibility and deep enough pockets to take care of the county. So is that, is that in there as a condition? I only saw one line.
I, it's, it's not in there as a condition. It's, it's common industry practice. I know I've gone through this before. Nicky, do you have?
I do have condition number six, the binding obligation that this SUP shall be binding on the applicant or any successors, assignees, current, future, lessy, sublessy, or owner of the solar energy facility. That's condition number six. Is that sufficient?
I, I don't, you see, I don't know. I think that has to be asked of a lawyer, but my, my concern is, again, the assigns on this thing. And I, and again, I guess I'm not just worried about the LLC at Rosny Creek. This becomes a model for other things that we're doing to these small solar businesses because quite frankly, if we end up with a lot of them and they end up, we already had one that was sold to an Israeli company. All right? I don't know, I don't know what the contract says. I don't know if there's any litigation could be done here in the United States or would it require a lawyer going overseas? I mean, in my experience, that can't happen. So quite frankly, I'd like to make sure that the county is covered in the, in the eventuality that, that this LLC either gets sold or becomes defunct and that we have, we have financial coverage or we're going to require litigation to get that. So that's, that's where my, that's where my head's at, if you understand. So somehow, in the assigns, and I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but I'm suggesting that, that some, there should be a condition in it to make sure that, that there's some parental responsibility, financial responsibility in the event that the LLC either changes hands or ends up going defunct.
Yeah. And to my knowledge, the, the most that any solar industry company will do is post that financial surety upfront, and that's what we're offering in the form of a bond. And we do, we have, we do this for financing reasons and because it doesn't make sense for us to tie up liability for all of our projects in one. If it's any consolation, we have financed over eight, you know, this is a 50 meg, a five-megawatt project. We financed over 8,000 megawatts of projects in this manner and it's something that we do. And so it defer to you, of course, and we're willing to work with you, but if it's a matter of posting more upfront, then that's absolutely something that we can discuss.
That's something I think between you and, and the zoning commissioner and also our lawyer, but I, I think there needs to be some, some financial surety. This is a real small company that you're creating and it just seems to me that the county's got to have some financial protection here that's over and above the, the balance sheet that you're offering with this small LLC. That's all I can say.
Okay. Love you, Pete. Elder, comments?
Yeah. Ms. Edmondson, I want to ask you first. Don't we pretty much put all the same conditions that we had, like for Apex?
Yes, these are the same working conditions that were placed on the special use permit that was approved for Apex.
Well, you should take care of all these deals there.
We've addressed these in conversations today. Mr. Kapaczynski does want me to seek more legal counsel on those binding obligations, so I will do this and I can send a response out prior to the next meeting in the form of an email.
Yeah. And then I'd like to keep getting an update on the, how many acres we're going to put out so we can get all the way up to the 4,500 acres. But if you can give me an update when we get ready to do it. But the other part of that is, right now, it's still on paperwork, it's saying 439 acres and I know I got a lot of two that says 55 acres is what y'all are actually going to use. But unless you survey it or put it in a different block, to me, our paperwork stays at 439 acres, even though you say you want to do 55 because you're in a 439-acre lot. That's my thought. Now, I don't know what everybody else thinking about it, but if somewhere or another y'all can make it a 55-acre lot or surveyed acreage, then, then that would say, all we're doing is 55 acres. We're not doing the whole 439. But that's my thought of what, on what anybody else. Hey, and then one more question. I heard somebody else say that this was different, that the megawatts are not going to it online and gets separated everywhere. It's going to be for people in the county. Some of them get discounts and all. So if we had a big storm, if we had a big storm up the road and it cut the power off and those solar panels were still, it was daylight, would they feed the places down the road?
Um, no. And, well, if I may, I did prepare some slides. I don't have to go through all of them, but to address your question specifically, I can discuss community solar, which is the goal for this project, a little bit more. Would you mind going to the second slide? One more. Yes. So this, the way this project will work is it will feed power directly into local electrical lines. So on paper, nothing changes unless you, a Dominion Energy customer elects to participate in the program and subscribe to it. So while solar energy is being fed into the local electrical lines, which goes to local homes and businesses, it's not going to show up on anybody's bill unless they contact us to subscribe, which is something that we can talk more. That's the nature of the community solar program. If, to address your question about power outages, if the power goes down, will you still have power locally? No. There are certain safety protocols that this solar farm has to follow, so if there's an electrical line down, the solar farm shuts down, so it's not electrifying the grid and putting linesmen's lives in jeopardy. Battery storage does create an opportunity for that. Again, not part of what we're asking for here, but that is the only way at this time with current technology to make that possible, to have a local energy source. So with the community solar program, what happens is a project owner, like Rosny Creek, for example, would sell all of the solar power to Dominion and Dominion would continue feeding electricity to all of its customers per usual. Some of the customers that are Dominion Energy customers, it is statewide, any Dominion Energy customer in Virginia can go to a subscriber organization and say, I'd like to get community solar on my electric bill. So on paper, they get a credit for their portion of a project like Rosny Creek. We do have the ability, there are approximately 3,800 Dominion Energy customers in the county. We do have the ability to work with the subscriber organization to give a preference to local Buckingham County Dominion Energy customers so that they can benefit from it. And we're talking savings of about 10% on their annual electricity costs. So a little confusing. It's all on paper, but that's how it would work.
You're right. That's fine.
Thank you for indulging me.
You're right.
Any other Commissioners have any questions before the open up the public hearing at this time?
Just, just to go back with Mr. Allen had said, I'm, I'm interested. I thought, I thought that's what was happening, where you were reducing this to 55 acres. We're, we're not talking about 429 acres, right?
Oh, oh, yes. So that's what we're, yeah, that was the amended, amendment that Nicky mentioned for condition number seven, the general plan. It stipulates where on this 439-acre property we're allowed to develop, as well as that our maximum land disturbance area is 55 acres.
So your project is 55 acres, not 439.
Maximum.
So essentially leaves the rest of that acreage open for other solar businesses. Is that, I think that's kind of where you're coming from.
Well, when you, when you finish your paperwork, you will be done 439 acres, not 55, because 55 is not isolated. That's my thought.
I have a misunderstanding and that's, I thought when this was done, you were going to have 55 acres that you used up of the 4,500 acres that we're allowing for solar projects in this county.
That's, that's our intent and that's what we're trying to communicate with the amendment to that condition.
So the project is a 55-acre project, not a 439-acre project?
Right. The whole parcel is 439 acres. Our project on that parcel, it's a large parcel, our project on that parcel is 55.
So who, who essentially owns the rights for the other acreage other than the 55 acres? Are you going to continue to control the rest of that acreage?
Um, as far as our lease says, yes, we do have sole, solar rights to that property.
I didn't understand that.
See, see, like Dominion was going to put that Danielle on 20. 2,200 acres, a little bit more, 2,200 acres, but they won't be used but 800 or 900 acres for the solar panels. So, I mean, it doesn't matter, the 2,200 acres is what we put down on paper. Even though they didn't use for 900 or 600 or whatever they want to use, they ain't doing none of it right now, but on paperwork, the 2,200 is what, to me, what we- doing none of it right now. But on paperwork, the 2,200 is what, to me, what we're writing down. And like to here, 439 is what you're going to write down as what we are saying it's okay to use, even though they're saying we don't need but 55 acres. But to me, it needs to be isolated before you say, this is what we're using, just this lot right here. That's my thought.
Now, I totally misunderstood. I thought maybe this project was being revised to only use and account for 55 acres.
That, that is what we're saying.
Well, then you don't have a need for 429 acres.
Well, we didn't make the project parcel size. That's just how it came. And so that's what we have the lease on. But I, I will say, it is typical practice for us to build the project and then release the rest of the acreage of the parcel from the lease. So that's not something that we've written into the conditions, no. But we have said that we are going to just build the 55. So, I mean, we're not, we're not, we don't have any intention to build more than that on this property. So.
Why can't we put a condition together then to ensure that the rest of that acreage be released?
And with this general plan that has been submitted, just like the rest of the special use permit requests that come before you, anything that is submitted, all documents with the special use permit, any approval that may be granted, only what is allowed in the special use permit with that general site plan is what is permitted. Nothing else with this permit request. So this permit request would be only for the 55 acres. Yes, this property tax information, the tax map is presented to you the way that it is. This happens to be a 439-acre parcel. So it's presented to you in the introduction of the public hearing, because that is, that is how that parcel exists. What the applicant or any applicant on special use permits are going to do is, they're going to submit documents that support the site plan. All documents in support of this application are for a 55-acre site plan. So if the special use permit is ultimately, if it's granted, then that document will come in when, let's say that this were to be granted, when they are able to obtain their building permit, they're going to come in, it's going to be located here on another site plan that they're going to give us for the building and construction of these panels. So if it's on the bottom right-hand corner of, of this particular parcel as indicated on the site plan, and they come, it's on the top left, I can't permit that. From a zoning standpoint, I'm going to go back to this file, as I do with all of them, and say, I'm not able to present this. Your permit was based upon a 55-acre site that you indicated on your site plan that was turned in with part of your documentation that was ultimately approved. So I will not approve that zoning. They will not get a building permit request, because they're turning in an application that maybe matches a 30-acre site plan. This, this property description is 439 acres, but the application for, and the site plan that supports this application is a 55-acre site plan. Does that, does that help?
Yeah. Let me ask the question this way. We have 4,500 acres we want to set aside for, for solar work. Okay? If we had nothing else, and all we had was this 55 acres, would it be 4,500 available, less than 55, or less than 439?
So the, that 4,500-acre decision that was made within a board meeting?
Right.
Um, I believe that that is still part of the solar policy that is under review. That is a working policy currently. I don't believe that there's been, someone correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, I understand it. I'm just using that as a supposition.
At this time, there has been no designation that it is going to be a differentiation between site plan and parcel size. At this time, the way that I understand it from our county administrator, and he is not here with us this evening, I wish he were to correct me if I'm wrong, is that it is the entire parcel size. So the entire acreage size, just like you were referencing the Dominion Pineside project, their project was 2,276 acres in total. That would be what would count against the 4,500-acre requirement if that became policy. It wouldn't be the 800, 5 to 800 acres that were actually in panel for the site plan. It, as it stands currently, it is the, the total acreage size that is encompassed in the application, not just the site.
And, and the only way that would change is if they released the rest of the acreage, right?
With the applicant, that would probably need to go under legal review. And I'll tell you that this because this application is based on the 55-acre site plan, but with the entire 440 acres, acres encompassed. To me, that would be probably a modification to come back, and that would require a new SUP application. I mean, and that's also part of something that's within the private sector in a business contract that could be negotiated after us, between the applicant and the landowner. We may not even be privy to know that that happened.
Any expansion on, you know, would cause another SUP to be generated? In other words, this is for 55 acres. If for whatever reason, two years from now, and they came back and they want to do another 50 acres, it's another project, and it has to come before.
Yeah. But see, what they do, John, is that they, they end up controlling 439 acres, even though they're using only 55. What I'm saying to you is, they control, they control solar development in this county. They control 439 acres of solar development in this county, even though they're only, only, even though they're only contributing 55 acres. I think that's, I think that's Danny's concern. It's my concern, too.
Right. I understand. It sounds like me that one solution would be then to make a policy for the number of acres as in panels, not the total acres.
Yeah. Or plus your buffer. I mean, if you want 55 acres, your, your project request should be for 55 acres, not 439. I think that's your point, right?
Yeah, to me.
Well, he's trying to streamline it down, and she said she would do it. But it's just like Nikki said, it's 55 acres. That's prob, if they were to try to do something else on the 439, it would generate another SUP.
But it's the control of that 439 that's, that.
That's the way the policy is right now. We got to change the policy. We, the board supervisor.
Either that, or what we do is, we ask her to only ask for 55 acres.
That's what they've asked for.
They're asking for 439.
That's because the property is designated on our tax map as 439. It's a piece of prop. That's the way the protocol's set up.
Same thing for the 2,200 acres, though. You can say, the same thing when Dominion was doing the 2,200 acres.
Yeah, you, what I'm saying is.
The 2,200 acres is what you go put down on paper, but they ain't going to use but 800 acres.
I agree.
So same thing here. Their 439 is what you put down on paper.
They, they made the amendment 455 acres. That's what the project size is.
That's what, but you ain't got no way to cut it off, so it's, it's no good. To me, you need to survey the 55 acres that you're going to use, plot it, and show it back at the next meeting. That'd be fine, for me. My thought. In that way, it's, it's already taken care of, 55 acres.
It, it isn't uncommon for us to release that acreage. As I mentioned, from the lease after construction, we do involve a surveyor to plot the exact bounds of a, of our built project. So if that was something that needed to be part of the conditions to help with clarification, it's absolutely something that we can talk about with the county. But yes, 55 acres is our maximum.
Right. Yeah. I know it's in paperwork, but I mean, just on paper, you still got the 439. That's a, that's a negative part.
What, what would you recommend, Danny? What, what would you want to do?
To me, I just, you know, if they surveyed it and plotted it out, 55 acres, and then brought it back to us, that's good. That just shows, this is it. That's all they can do. And that's all they got.
You'd like to table it, and then have them go resurvey and then bring it back to us?
Oh, they, they can do it whenever. They can do it. If, if they think he's going to do it, then.
How'd you handle it for this meeting, though?
Oh, this meeting, no. Well, they can bring it to, get two more meetings with the board. So if you want to, then, if they, they can do it in no time. It don't take long.
It helps. We do survey as part of our final engineering plan. So this is a preliminary design. It shows you the location. Our approximate meets and bounds of the project. Before we can apply for a building permit, we will submit a final site plan that has been specifically drawn out and delineated, as you're suggesting.
Most time, that's after you get your permit.
After the special use permit, but prior to the building.
Right. Okay. So then we'd have to come back and change it.
Well, if we, if we had a condition that said, said you had to get a survey, correct?
Uh, as part of pre-construction, yes.
All right. So if we had a condition that said, subsequent to your survey, you release all the excess, you will release all the excess acreage? I mean, does that, does that help? I mean, would that work?
I'd just say, we only used, and then we got it plotted, 55 acres. So the 439 is removed.
So Supervisor Allen, let me just try to make sure, I'm trying to take notes over here as well. You're stating that, that survey needs to be a final survey with a separate tax map number, so that the acreage is no longer a portion of the 439-acre original parcel. Is that?
Exactly. Right. Yeah.
Well, then, that would need to take place during this application process, because if it takes place afterwards, that's a modification and a change in amendment to a permit that could possibly be granted during the process. So.
What you're saying, y'all don't do it, or not, not normally doing it until after you finish the survey.
Survey. So we'll do pre and post-construction surveys.
Yeah. If you can just throw a quick surveyor, that, to me, that's all you need. Then that would actually be on paper saying, this is all we're going to use.
Are you still asking for a separate tax map policy?
If they want 55. But if they want, go on, leave it only 439, then we count the 439. Either way, whatever you want to do. But if you don't plot it, to me, it stays 439. You want to leave it? I mean, I know you're saying you don't want to use the 55, but that's still a block, any 439 acres.
Well, just table that for right now. And does any other questions, and we'll do the public hearing, and then we'll come back to this, give everybody time to think about it a little bit. Is any other questions? Yes, Anne.
Sorry. I'm going to circle back to Mr. Kapczynski's part about the surety and the bond. I see in section 10.7 in your documentation, that prior to issuance of a building permit is when you will provide that bond to the county, and that it's updated every five years by a licensed engineer. Is that a non-biased engineer? Is that a state-employed? Is that someone of the county's choosing?
No, that we specify. It's a Virginia licensed engineer who has experience pricing out, decommissioning for solar farms, that sort of thing. So.
And, and that bond, I, based on the prior paragraph, I know the audience doesn't necessarily have that in front of them, but it talks about returning the land to its previous condition, and that engineer is able to assess the environmental aspects of that as well, not just the value of the solar farm?
Yes. Yeah. It's, they talk extensively about soil remediation and that sort of thing after the equipment has been properly disposed of. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? I think, Ms. Hertz, you can sit down.
Your time.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any signed up?
We do. Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Teresa McManus.
Okay.
Teresa McManus, District Two, Scott's Bottom Road, right in the path of Rosney Creek. Did you hear yourselves? Did you just hear what went on? Thank you, Mr. Allen. Thank you, Mr. Kapczynski. Thank you for what you did. How about writing a contract right the first time? Oh, that's, that's, that's an anomaly here. We don't do that in this county, because we want it to come back and get us in trouble every time. You can laugh. It is funny. It's true. You know it's true. We do it all the time. We talked about education last time. We have a problem here. Let's talk about the environmental impact. I plan on being still around in 30 years. My farm is going to be impacted by this. What are you going to do for me? What do I get? What do I get when I come down with cancer? You probably haven't researched those reports. I have. What are you going to do for my animals? What are you going to do for my water? What are you going to do for me? How much money am I worth? I know I'm not worth much to you guys. I'm a pain in your ass. But what are you going to do for me? My kids think I'm worth something. My grandchildren think I'm worth something. Everyone in that area is going to have the same thing. What are you going to do for us? What research have you really done on solar paneling? You've done the government's research. You've listened to her paperwork. You almost choked when she said, when the lights go out, the solar panels don't come on, and they're not helping us. We're going to be just like Texas. You forgot that? When Texas froze its back end off a few years ago because their solar panels didn't work? You guys think solar paneling's the greatest thing since life spread? Have you not seen how pollutant it is and what it does to the people and the environment, how it kills them? Nah, you don't want to do that. I've said before, it's perceived that this county doesn't care about its people, that money is flowing somewhere. Can't be proved. But it's, looks like our boards are spineless and can't stand up for themselves, and are taking orders from somebody else in big business. And you're not listening to the people, and you don't care about the people. Then whose pockets are being lined in this county? Because it's certainly not being mine.
Do we have anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we'll turn this back over to the board. We've got a couple of things to talk about. Anybody thought about Danny's issue with the difference in the acres of the panels and the amount of acres of the property, and how to rectify that?
I think, I think if it's a 55-acre farm, we need to make it a 55-acre piece of paper. That's my view. I mean, I, I don't know why we, we make it a block of 420. I think it's not going to take that long to do a survey, and I think we got to do the paper right, paperwork right.
So you're asking, Ms. Danny, that you want a survey and a new tax map policy created?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What will happen to what we've already approved then for the other solar panels, for the two that's been approved?
They're graphed all of it in. There will be no change to them.
Right. Okay.
They've already approved and ain't going through.
You know, I think we have to take a look at what's going on here as a model, because if we don't start, I know we don't have, we don't have that stringent a policy. But I got to, I know we're trying to develop one, which is good. But honestly, I think we need to take a look at these smaller programs and use them as models. If we intend to go forward with any kind of a, a solar program in the county, we need to start putting our foot down as to what we really want and how we want these things contracted. This may not be completely what we need, but I think it's a good start.
Nikki, what would be involved in, after the survey, to create a new tax map policy?
That would be solely the responsibility. So it would be surveyed, survey approved, recorded, tax map created. It would be.
Would that require any input from either the planning commission or the board supervisors?
Um, this property would be allowed, you know, parcels or less as a minor subdivision. So this would be.
What effect would that have on the landowner? That you're taking one of his, I mean, is it, this is going in the center of the property, to a certain degree?
This closer to Route 60 on that bottom right-hand side of this parcel, it would, they would be.
Still got to have access through the property to get to it. So you're going to have to create a.
A 50-foot right-of-way.
50-foot right-of-way. Correct. Okay.
Subdivision ordinance does require that, that 50-foot right-of-way be. Get to that. So there would be additional expense, whether it's landowner or applicant, however.
Right. Okay. What would you project would be the timeframe for this to occur?
I'm in working with other surveyors at this time with simple divisions of one lot. It's usually eight to 12 weeks.
Okay.
Based upon workload.
I guess my next question is, we usually do things on a timely manner. If it's 12 weeks, it's three months.
Now, it could be up to the applicant. They may have a, a surveyor or something that moves quicker. This is only what I've seen with a few of the.
Right. I, I guess what I'm asking is, you know, it's criteria, set out protocol you got to follow. And we're delaying it possibly three months. Is that, that might be a question I need to ask Mr. Wright.
Probably. It's a question for Mr. Wright. But, you know, if it, we've seen other cases. I'm not sure that it's been three. I'm not sure that it's been three months where the Planning Commission has required more information before the commission feels that they're able to make a recommendation to the board, so.
Right.
State that more information is needed.
There is a way to cut a little of that out. Time, length of time is make sure it's just done before a public hearing of the Board of Supervisors. That would help some.
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm looking for some input from the Planning Commission.
There's no way to make it only take fifty-five acres of the usable forty-five hundred, as of now at least, without re-s, I mean, resurveying it?
So what this application is for, is for this tax map, which happens to be four hundred and thirty-nine acres. What the site plan is indicative of within this application is that the solar facility, a five-megawatt solar facility, will only encompass fifty-five acres of the four hundred and thirty-nine acre parcel. The, these drawings, site plans and all have, these are all documentation, forms of documentation that support this application process, which means that Rosney Creek Solar is not allowed to take up any more land space than the fifty-five acres in the exact spot that has been indicated on their site plan. Now, the fact that the four hundred and thirty-nine acre parcel exists, I cannot change that. So if it's, so if you're trying to review that and analyze how it could impact a solar policy, the gist of this entire application is that the tax map happens to be four hundred and thirty-nine acres, but Apex Rosney Creek Solar Project will only encompass and is only allowed to encompass fifty-five acres. So the, the, this five-megawatt, if this permit was approved the way that it is written, this five-megawatt facility would be a fifty-five acre facility, the compound would be fifty-five acres, but it is part of four hundred and thirty-nine acres. And I go back to the solar policy that is in review and is a working document for the Board of Supervisors right now indicates, to the best of my knowledge, that it is total acreage that is applied for. That being total acreage of the parcels that are included in the application, not the total acreage of the site of the solar facility.
So what it means is that Mr. Davis has a four hundred and thirty-nine acre parcel that's, that's been approved for solar panels, even though Apex is only gonna take fifty-five acres of that? That's what you're saying?
That, his parcel has not, has only been approved to hold fifty-five acres of solar panels as indicated in a site plan. It does not mean that his special use permit is allowed to hold four hundred and thirty-nine acres' worth of solar panels. His application in this permit, this case twenty-two S U P three nineteen, the only approval for this four hundred and thirty-nine acre, if it were to gain approval, would be for the fifty-five acre site that is submitted here. If Mr. Davis and Rosney Creek Solar wanted to come back and put another fifty-five acre solar generating facility on a four hundred and thirty-nine acre parcel, that is a new application with a new site plan and, and it would be depicted in the site plan where that solar generating facility would be. But this application, this case, is specifically for the fifty-five acres. Yes, it is part of four hundred and thirty-nine acres because it could have been a fourteen-hundred acre parcel. It's a four hundred and thirty-nine acre parcel that will only be allowed to place solar panels as indicated on the site plan of the fifty-five acre.
But the fact is that the four hundred and thirty-nine acres itself, because of this S U P, can be allowed to have solar panels at that point in time. Once we approve this, it's for the four thirty-nine, right?
The approval is, is, the parcel that is, that it is applied for is the four hundred and thirty-nine acres.
Right.
But the only place that these panels are allowed to be placed.
For this specific LLC.
For this case, yes, sir. So is it that the feeling that you have this evening is that the fifty-five acre compound needs to be completely separate and you don't want it, this approval to be granted on that entire tax map as part of it? I'm just trying to understand.
I don't know if that's significant. I guess I'm think, I'm sitting here thinking, well, if they've got a, if they've only got the ability to put in fifty-five acres, it still leaves, if, supposing the county agreed to forty-five hundred acres, it still leaves some three hundred and eighty acres allowable for some other company to come in and, and contract with Mr. Davis if they wanted to, is my point, right?
If I were to receive an application for that, I would present it to you as a commission.
It would be, it would be another application, another S U P.
Right, so I, I guess what I'm saying is, I just don't, having understood it this way, I don't know that there's any significant, I mean, why would the, if we, if we do have this thing separated in another tax map, we're gonna have to pay for a road, the county's gonna have to pay for a road, right?
No, we wouldn't. We have design standards for that fifty-foot right-of-way.
The applicant would have to pay for the road.
The applicant has to pay for the road.
Mr. Wright, do you have some comment?
Teresa McManus.
Hey, what did you say about the border? How would you, how would you, you said if they, they. Right. Okay, what did you say about the border? How would you, how would you, you said if they, they. Right.
I understand it, I understand it.
Since this has been, at least two examples we have of the other twenty-two hundred acres and this one, if it is a working policy, is it privy of the Planning Commission to ask the Board of Supervisors to, or carefully clarify that language for us? Or a request that we update it to include just the approved acre?
I assume, we could make, certainly could make a suggestion towards it, yes. I think I would frame it as a suggestion.
Am I, am I asking them to clarify or am I making this?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the policy to know if it needs clarification or if we would request to update it. I haven't seen the language, so whatever.
Right.
Chairman.
If you look at their site plan, they have, they have a border, they have identified a border around this fifty-five acres, correct?
Right.
And that becomes a recorded border?
It's not recorded, it is documentation in this application, which means that all pieces and parts that are submitted with this application, if it's approved, become a part of this, which means when they come to, when the applicant comes to obtain their building permit and they give me another site plan accompanying that zoning building permit application and their building site does not match what's in this S U P file, they don't get approved because they're only approved for the site plan as indicated in their application, if it's approved, if it were to be.
Yeah, I, I think I, I think.
They don't have the ability to come in and make any changes. If they, if they say that it's going to be forty percent in panels, but yet the calculations are that it's sixty percent in panels, that changes because these conversations and discussions are also part of the file.
I want to make sure, if any commissioners got any more questions, comments?
I don't really think that we're helping ourselves. I think it's pretty much cut and dried to what we, we want to have anyway. I mean, I think Pete's seeing it now that it's a policy that it's gonna be fifty-five acres and it's all plotted out. Now, we can go into a lot more and do a lot more and take up a lot more time, but I think it's okay like it is.
Any other comment?
Yeah, it's okay. Either way you want to do it, all I'm trying to say is the four thou, four hundred and thirty-nine acres will be subtracted from the forty-five hundred.
I understand what your concern is.
Even, even though they say fifty-five, unless it's plotted separate, in my opinion. And I don't care, you can have the four thirty-nine or you can have the fifty-five, whatever you want to call it.
I think the difference is that Dominion or, who owns, is it Dominion?
Dominion was doing the last.
Yeah, the twenty-two hundred acres is under their lease, where this, the four thirty-nine is not under the lease of Apex, am I correct? You're only, you're only leasing, you're only leasing fifty-five acres, am I right?
They leased the four thirty-nine, Ms. Hertz indicated.
So they'll control the four thirty-nine?
Right.
So it's the same thing?
Right.
Confusing, thank you.
All right, we've, we've got to make a decision one way or the other here, either table, move forward or reject. If we don't have any more discussion, someone might want to make a motion.
I'd go ahead and forward it, but I, what I'm saying is, whatever they want to do, they can change it to fifty-five and they'll take it off my forty-five hundred acres, or they can leave it to four thirty-nine.
Yeah. What if you change the policy from total acres to acres in panels? Wouldn't that help resolve this issue?
Whatever they want, it's just, I'm just saying.
You're right, but what I'm saying is.
I'm gonna get that off to forty-five hundred, whatever we're gonna do.
And I don't know, I can't speak for the applicant here, but if you were, if the Board of Supervisors took it on themselves and changed the policy to count the number of acres in panels versus the total acres of the project, they may be willing to submit something saying that that's all they want is the fifty-five acres. Really, it's less than that. If she said forty percent, that's only like twenty, twenty acres that's actually in panels. So, I don't know. That, that was just a suggestion on my part.
Mr. Chairman, didn't she say that they'd be willing to release the rest of the acreage?
It's usually done later.
All right, so why don't we put that condition in there that once this final survey is done, that you release the rest of the acreage? Would you be willing to do that?
Well, now, are you now asking, we sort of walked away from the survey.
She didn't hear you.
Because you got the site plan and you've got the outside.
Well, what I'm trying to do is kind of streamline this so that we end up with only fifty-five acres that they control. That becomes the question, who owns the fifty, who owns the four hun, who owns the rights to the four hundred and thirty-nine acres? That's the question, right? Unless they release it.
Even if they maintain control of the solar rights to that four hundred and thirty-nine acre parcel, they still have to come back to apply for another facility. They're only allowed with that, with this application, this permit that they've applied for that, for that fifty-five acres as the site plan's indicated in this.
But what they're doing is they're taking three hundred and eighty acres away from whatever the maximum is the county wants, that's the point. If they only, if they only ever put fifty-five acres down, that's three hundred and eighty acres, they're taking away from other potential solar companies or some other application because they own the rights to that three hundred and eighty acres that they're not using. That's the issue.
Understandable, but it.
So if they release it, if they, if, we could put a condition here that said, okay, at the end of the survey, whatever this period of time is, that, that your company would release that back to the county or whomever, to Mr. Davis, in order for them to contract to whomever they want to, it seems to me that that would resolve the issue. That get you where you needed to be with your forty-five hundred acres?
Yeah, they can do it, either way they want to do it, just to make it.
With a contract, correct?
Yeah, all right, here you go, okay. All right, yeah, then I, I'll just take it. It's, I, you know, confusing.
I just say we go, I make a motion, we go ahead and approve it and send it on to the Board of Supervisors and I'll talk to the Board of Supervisors some more about whether we gonna do the fifty-five or four thirty-nine.
I second that.
All right, have a motion, a second, and move this forward to the Board of Supervisors. Any further discussion? Being none all in favor, raise your right hand. That moves on to the Board of Supervisors. Okay, that brings us to the next case, Chris Hux.
Yes, sir. The next public hearing is for case twenty-two S U P three twenty, landowner Terry Husky at seven ninety-nine Troublesome Creek Road, Buckingham, Virginia. Chris Hux is the applicant, seven ninety-nine Troublesome Creek Road, Buckingham, tax map one twenty-three, parcel forty-eight. It does contain approximately thirteen acres and it is in the Maysville Magisterial District. It's A-one zoning and the applicant, of course, wishes to obtain a special use permit to operate a non-retail professional services office, medical office at the home located at the seven ninety-nine Troublesome Creek Road address. And of course, the zoning ordinance does not permit this as a permitted use, however, with the application for special use permit, it may be permitted by the Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the Planning Commission in accordance with this ordinance in the Code of Virginia. The Planning Commission may recommend and the Board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if this special use permit is approved. Below our conditions, ten conditions that have been presented, the full application that we heard last month, Mr. Hux is available this evening to address any questions, concerns resulting from the public hearing or from those of you serving on the Planning Commission this evening.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Do any of the commissioners have any question for the applicant prior to the public hearing?
Well, I had something that I talked to Nick and him, but, but I know how it looked on the Code of Virginia and the Code of Virginia had always said that a nurse practitioner would have to have a doctor there, but then once I looked at all his, his permits and all, it had him in good shape where he didn't need a, a doctor and then he had the rights to write prescriptions, so as far as I'm concerned right now, he's, everything's in pretty good shape for him to dive on in.
Okay. Any other comments before we do the public hearing? All right, I will then open up the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up, Nikki?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three. First will be John Starette, followed by Brent Davis.
Okay.
How y'all doing? My name is, was supposed to be Jack Starette. I personally support Mr. Hux one hundred percent. I'm a, I'm a patient of his when he was at this and when he went down to Central. Personally, my family, he has helped me, it doesn't matter what the medical condition, but he's helped me. I refer to him as, like Dr. Emerson. This here will have you where, where Dr. Emerson, some of y'all remember, he used to come to the office at one o'clock in the morning. I really think this would be the same type of thing. You know, and that's just my, I got two minutes, I never talked this quick in a long time. But anyway, I'm just joking. I'm usually a shy person. No, but serious business, I think it's a good thing for the county personally. I think that Chris has really showed a dedication to the county. I've been a patient of his, like I say, I don't think it's a joke, there's nothing serious about it. It'd be different if I, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that, for real. You know, and I personally would be one of his first, once he opens up, I personally would be one of his first people to sign up with him, personally. Two hours and I waited thirty minutes, thirty seconds. All right, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm Brent Davis, wanted to speak on Chris's behalf on this. Couple months ago, I had a little incident going where I had appendicitis. It kind of went south and ended up spending like six weeks in the hospital, but at the very first of it, it was supposed to be just, you know, going for appendicitis, next day I'm out. Ended up kind of feeling bad, so I called Chris and I thought I was a twenty-three-year-old healthy person, I didn't believe in a primary care physician, but I was quickly alerted that I need one. So I reached out to Chris and the next day he put me in his office, went there and did a couple of blood work tests and he came back and he said, hey, you know, you got white blood cells that are really high right now. I said, we'll put that in layman's terms for him, and he said, well, you got an infection going on. So we went and he set up some imaging for me, went to the hospital and got imaging done and I had a big infection going on, so that's the whole spell of six weeks that went down, but. healthy person. I didn't believe in a primary care physician, but I was quickly alerted that I need one. So I reached out to Chris and the next day, he put me in his office. Went there and did a couple of blood work tests and he came back and he said, hey, you know, you got white blood cells that are really high right now. I said, we'll put that in layman's terms for him. And he said, well, you got an infection going on. So we went and he set up some imaging for me, went to the hospital and got imaging done, and I had a big infection going on. So that's the whole spell of six weeks that went down. But in the heat of all the hospital visits that went about, Chris stayed in contact with me. There's not too many people, too many business people. They're going to act like family and Chris honestly acted like family. Even after I was all well, he still checked on me. And even to this day, I mean, if I have any type of cold or whatnot, I can go to his office and he definitely helps me out. So I think he'd be a valuable asset to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley Kitchen?
Good evening. My name's Shelley Kitchen and I'm here to speak on behalf of Chris Hucks. Chris has worked hard for the county ever since he got here at high school. He's been on the rescue squad and did everything he could for the medical community. I work for Central Health in the Home Health Office and here, since COVID-nineteen hit, since Dr. Mueller's no longer here, we don't have a physician in the county. We've had to decline a lot of patients because you can't treat them without a doctor signing orders. Chris has been, thank God, has signed orders for us so that we could treat our elderly community. If he hadn't have done that, they wouldn't have got the care they needed at home. So he is a great asset to our community and I hope that this will pass for him. And he treated me when he was with Dr. Mueller. I now have to go to Farmville to get my care just because that's the closest doctor. So I just want to speak on his behalf.
Thank you.
No one else is on?
No one else. I will say that for the record, Tim Furr of eight thirty-three Scotts Bottom Road, Dillon, Virginia, Whitehall District Two, gave his, sent an email and he was in support of Chris Hucks's application. So just want to put that on there. Any, now that I'll close the public hearing and I'll present it back to the board for review, questions, discussion?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. As a second, you'll go to the Board of Supervisors, Ms. Hucks. Thank you, sir. All right, that brings us to Olympia Moore.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This case twenty-two ZMA three twenty-one, this is Olympia Moore. I was contacted by Ms. Moore this evening. She has a sickness in her family. She is not able to attend and she is asking if she could move this case to.
December?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, do I have?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion about moving this to December meeting? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, she's approved. Come back in December.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, that brings us to new business. Before this case is introduced, I have to abstain to, I assist the Hollisters in their timber management, so I am going to relinquish control of the commission and to Mr. Doria, and he will take, take over all this application.
Okay. The introduction for case twenty-two, SUP three twenty-two, the landowner and applicants are Lawrence and Barbara Hollister at forty-eight hundred Mosley Road in Mosley, Virginia. The property information for this application this evening is Tax Map one sixty-one, parcel twenty, and is approximately four hundred and seventy-two acres. It's located at twenty-eight seventy Rock Mill Road in Dillon in the Curdsville Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A-one. The applicant this evening wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast. They are asking the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing for this request. The property is zoned A-one. The zoning ordinance does not permit an Airbnb bed and breakfast as a permitted by right use in an A-one zoning district. Zoning ordinance does require that an Airbnb bed and breakfast and, obtain a special use permit. The submitted application and narrative are attached. Would it be suitable to the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing, possibly December twenty-seventh, twenty-two, at seven P.M.? I'd also like to add that Mr. and Ms. Hollister are with us this evening to address any questions or concerns that you may have. I believe that Ms. Hollister has a handout for you and has also sent pictures, photographs of the property, in case you haven't had a chance to, to visit.
Okay. Ms. Hollister, could you come up and speak to us, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Barbara Hollister. My husband Larry Hollister. And thank you for hearing us this evening. We are excited about this project and hope you will be too.
Thank you, ma'am. Could you tell us what you have in your plans and give us a short narrative, please?
I'd be glad to. We purchased this property approximately three years ago from my nephew that passed away, Roger Dale Donovan, his estate. And this property, over the years, has been in our family for like hundreds of years. It was granted to the Donovan family, was a two thousand acres. And we're, we're proud owners to have, what, a fourth of it, almost? We've done cosmetic work on the house, like we replaced where there was carpet throughout the house. It's a four-bedroom house, three bathrooms, three stories. It's a basement, first floor, second floor. It's a mid-century modern built in nineteen eighty by Roger Dale and his wife. There, mostly the property is in timber and Mr. Bigford knows all about that. It has been reseeded and replanted. But if you want a place of peace, comfort, and serenity, we have it to offer and we love to share it with those that are coming through or passing through. We're blessed with five children and fourteen grandchildren and they plan to spend some time there, but we understand with Airbnb, you can block out your times, which we certainly intend to do, but we would like to be able to share it. And then what we would earn from the Airbnb, we would reinvest it back into the property. Any questions?
Any commissioners have any questions that they'd like to ask?
And we invite you to come.
Is this, you just want to use the home for your Airbnb? You're not going to do any?
No campsites.
No campsites, nothing, okay?
No, no.
I'm just wondering. I'm just trying to make sure you're fine.
We have a nice creek that they can walk up and down. That's where the name Seven Springs, there are seven springs that literally come in to make this nice big creek.
You got a beautiful piece of property. I went and took a look at it and I, I was asking the same question. You don't intend to have any campsites, correct?
No, sir.
All right, and how many people would you assume would be there occupying this B and B at any rate?
Well, we have four bedrooms and four beds. And there is a sofa in the basement, but you would have to be a short person to sleep there.
I guess I'd qualify.
It wouldn't be for my husband, six foot five.
All right, that's very good. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Do I have a motion that we move this on to the public hearing?
Don't move, yeah. Second.
Have a motion and second, that we move on to the public hearing for this property. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
Thank you so much, and we issue your invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for taking over. That brings us to introduction of the Buckingham County Firefighters Association. Nikki?
Yes, sir. This is an introduction of case twenty-two, SUP three twenty-three. Landowners and applicants are the Buckingham County Firefighters Association. The property is located at Tax Map one twenty-five, parcel eleven. It is twenty-eight acres and it's located at a near the vicinity of three hundred South Constitution Route, Dillon, and it is in the Maysville Magisterial District. This zoning district is an agricultural district with a watershed overlay. In the written narrative, which has actually just been amended to show the correction by Mr. Bates, the application did show that it was a B-one business. It is actually an A-one with the watershed overlay and that is correct in his narrative, which I've given everyone a copy and we'll put that with the formal application. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an event center for activities, including but not limited to fundraising and training with up to six thousand attendees. The applicant is asking the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing for this request. Of course, the zoning ordinance does not permit an event center as a permitted by right use in an A-one zoning district. However, within this district, an event center may be permitted by the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by a special use permit following recommendation by the Planning Commission in accordance with this, and the Code of Virginia. You do have the application and the narrative and we do have the applicants present to discuss their application with you this evening.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Mr. Bates, would you come forward and just give us a quick overlay?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hope you all well this evening. So the, I'm the president of Buckingham County Firefighters Association and we recently purchased the twenty-eight acre parcel that we're now seeking the special use permit for. As you may be aware, beginning in two thousand nineteen, the Firefighters Association or its, the predecessor to it, ran a tractor pull as a fundraising event to benefit the four fire departments in the county. Based on the success of that, a second one was run in, in two thousand twenty-one and a third one this past summer, and really getting good response to that. Over those three events, we've had an average attendance of approximately three thousand people, but we were in some state of limbo about the future of it because we were using land that the county was gracious enough to let us operate on, which led us to, to purchase this property so we could get some permanence in the, in the project and then see if we could build the attendance. We do think that the long-term attendance could grow to no more than six thousand people and that there are some upsides to the county in addition to the private departments for an event of between three and six thousand people. Presently, we plan to offer the tractor pull once a year. There have been conversations among the members of the association, perhaps doing twice a year. In the application, we're asking or proposing that we would do no more than four events a year with two of them being a tractor pull. But having said that, there's no bandwidth in any of our membership's time right now to do more than the one that we have planned, but we, we do think that there'd be opportunities down the road for more events. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have. As Nikki pointed out, I incorrectly indicated it as, as B-one in the original application and the amended page eleven was, was submitted this evening. I do think that this proposed special use is in alignment with the other sort of special uses that could be permitted in A-one.
Hi, Mr. Bates.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's a house, there's a white house next to the entrance to that property. Is that your, is that part of the property?
No, sir, we do not own any, there's no improvements on the property we own.
So that driveway that goes into your property off of Route twenty, would you move that driveway down from that house?
The entrance that goes in to that property right now is a logging road that doesn't have a house next to it. I'm not sure that we're.
I might be looking at the wrong one.
Yes, sir, perhaps.
Yeah, there was a gated road as I, anyway, it might not be the same.
If there's a, I'm looking at the tax map, which is the, next to the last page in, in the application that we submitted, and it does not show a structure to the north of the property. And our, the entrance road is more to the north end of the property than the south end. I don't see a, a house on that side of the road.
I have to go take another look. Yeah, that, I know, I thought, now I might be looking at the wrong driveway. I thought I was looking at the right piece of property, but I'm.
Sure, and I'll, I'll be happy to meet you down there if you want to take a look at it.
We can do that.
Yeah.
That's fine. You intend to put traffic lanes in to handle six thousand people?
The, what we've run through VDOT, based on the site distances, they think that a commercial entrance would not require turn lanes on Route twenty, but we are planning on building four-lane road in the property to absorb the traffic. One of the challenges that we've had with the, the site off Wingo Road was getting people off of the road and into the property. We think that we can get, I think about a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy cars in four lanes off of the road to take the money in property, not have traffic backing up onto the road.
Giving some thought to the, I mean, if you had one of these events that did have six thousand people, I mean, we're talking people going all the way into Dillon.
Yeah, it's, we believe, and, and we actually should have an engineer contracted with us by the end of the week, but both of the engineering firms we talked to, that was something that we were concerned. We make sure we have that under control.
I'd like to hear a little more about that next time we talk. That'd be an interesting part of this.
Yep.
Right, y'all always use the local police also to set up and direct traffic also.
Yeah, what we've done, almost any event that happens in the county that the fire departments are involved with, we have a significant interface with local law enforcement and the state police. And so any of the traffic flow issues that are actually on the public highway, we coordinate with law enforcement on that and law enforcement's always handled that, whether it's the tractor pull or the Christmas lights that we've helped with traffic control for the Christian school or, or any of the other events. And then the fire department handles all the onsite parking and, and traffic issues. And, and we've had really good relationships with both the sheriff's office and the state police in that regard. And actually, VDOT, VDOT's been very helpful with every, any event that I've worked on in the last fifteen, twenty years, VDOT's been a pretty significant partner in those as well.
When you improved a lot, you gonna put any buildings on it or?
I beg your pardon?
You gonna put any buildings on this property? You gonna put a stadium or what are you gonna?
No, sir, no buildings are anticipated. We're going to develop the tractor pull track itself, which is basically a clay track. It'll have guardrails. We have a Conex container that we store things in. The Conex container will be relocated to that site. Right now, it's behind the Dillon Firehouse.
You usually bring in, on your previous events, you always bring in mobile storage and food items and stuff too.
Yes, sir.
Assuming you do the same thing?
Yeah, we, the, the sanitation would be handled through portable toilets. It's a very cost-effective way to deal with it. The, we've, we've done food a couple of different ways. We found the, actually the way that has the best return on the investment is to, to outsource the food. Last year, we did to a single vendor. We freed up thirty firefighters who could then be used for traffic control and other, and policing trash and not flipping burgers, and we actually made more money by outsourcing it to a single vendor.
You're gonna use this plot of land for training as well, I understand?
Yeah, we, we're talking about a variety of different kinds of training, you know, activities, but no, no live fire. The live fire training facility is the one on Route fifty-six.
Anything like that?
No, sir. Yeah.
Well, you have water and sewage hooked up to it from the county?
There's water, the, the water and sewer goes by the property.
Right.
There's a fire hydrant, if I'm not mistaken, not too far from the property boundary. We do in the application anticipate bringing a, a water line in for potable water, but we do not anticipate sewer.
Okay.
One I looked at online right here shows a driveway, both middleway, it looked like another driveway on the line on the other end.
On the north end of it? Yeah, it might be covered by the property line that I have on this, on this map here.
I mean, look like me, you already got two driveways in the back of the circle. Coming in one, you're down.
Yeah, we, we're anticipating just doing new road development on the property.
It'd be fine. I'm just looking.
So you've seen the property, right?
I walked every square foot of it before we bought it.
So you, and you know, there are no, according to what you're saying, you saw there, there really no houses nearby?
Yeah.
That's the forest. And so for instance, on this tax map, that's, that's a house.
Right.
No houses on either side.
I must have gotten the wrong piece of property.
There is a gate. It's a, it's a gated entrance. You get it off the road and then there's a rail gate, a metal hole gate by halfway.
All right, I have to take another look at it. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Like Mr. Brown?
Sir.
Sit on down.
Thank you all.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Make a motion that we go ahead and have a public hearing.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second to move it on to public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That moves to public hearing in December. Nikki, that brings you up to your report. Okay, that brings you up to your reports.
Yes, sir. So, the building permit report has been included for informational purposes, and I do have one update. I was able to make contact with one of the developers within the land use education program, and the schedule for 2023 will be out. I have confirmed eight seats in the land use education program with the VCU, and she will be calling me back in the next week and a half to confirm that, once the, she took everyone's names and information today, so that will take place the first couple of weeks of January through April, I believe, but that will be your certification as a planning commission member.
How long of an event is it?
It's Jan, I didn't write, not, I did not write down the dates because she had not posted those. I believe it's through about the middle of January through the beginning of April. There will be in, you'll need to actually have an in-person training session, and then there are other scheduled homework documents, and that'll be due before you go back and test.
Okay. Thank you very much.
But I will send all of that information to you once I get the confirmation. Something to look forward to in 2023.
Okay. That finalizes your part. I said that finalizes everything?
Yes, sir.
All right, commission matters and concerns. Any commissioners have anything they want to force at this time or ring up?
Good to go.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn then?
Don't move.
All right, we got a motion and second. I'm not going to wait for discussion. All in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Johnny?